John, could you give us an invocation, please?
Sure, let's be in a humble spirit of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this gorgeous day. Thank you for the, our ability to get together as a club and see each other, talk to each other. We pray today especially dear God for our children, for their health. Give us wisdom and give us courage to deal with these matters. As we eat our lunch, give us the strength there God to do your will. We ask these things in your holy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, John. If everyone could join me in the pledge of allegiance, Debbie, if you could pull it up on the screen. I'll admit this person. A pledge of allegiance, do the pledge of the United States of America. Do the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to introduce some of our Rotarian guests. We have Bruce DeBarry with us, our district governor, or not district governor, I'm sorry.
That's quite a promotion, Steve. That's quite a promotion, not yet, not yet.
Thanks for joining us, Bruce.
Glad to be here.
Anybody else have some guests that they would like to introduce? Well, we have Hannah Miller, she's our featured speaker today. Thanks for joining us, Hannah.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Does anybody else have anybody they'd like to introduce that we don't see? Anybody have their pets with them?
Not today.
Not today? Okay. Today in history, Casey, do you have some history for us?
Yeah, so I'll ask you three things. I thought, I picked out three things that everybody would like, so a little bit across a bunch of different generations. So we'll see how we do. So October 1st, 1962, this, this person took over the late night program called The Tonight Show. Went on to be one of the biggest figures in entertainment history of the 20th century. Anybody know who did that in 1962?
Here's Johnny.
Yeah, Johnny Carson did.
I miss Johnny Carson.
I know a lot of people remember this one. This happened in 1995, October 3rd. This famous football star is acquitted of a double murder. Anybody know who was acquitted of double murder in 19?
Ray Lewis?
OJ.
Yeah.
It was OJ Simpson. All right, here you go, 1990, October 4th. This TV drama was about a group of teenagers living in upscale Beverly Hills. It eventually became one of the top rated television shows on the fourth largest network, which was Fox. Anybody know what the, what was named for that show?
90210.
Yeah, that's it. I thought that would be, that would be a tough one. So there you go, that's this week in history.
Thank you, Casey. I did want to add that the 1966 on this day, the Chevrolet Camaro was introduced by a GM. Still being, it's a muscle car today. So, thought that was kind of cool. All right, thanks for that, Casey. Special birthdays. Let's see, gotta dig through my papers here. Here we go. Okay. Well, Joe Clark, September 27th, happy birthday, Joe. Debbie Zitko, September 27th, happy birthday, Debbie. Boy, you guys ought to have a party together.
We should have, happy birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday.
I hope our noise wasn't too loud, Steve.
Was that your birthday party?
That was my birthday party, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't sure if there was something graduation or something going on. Oh, yeah, you really bothered me, that was, that was very.
I was hoping that I would.
Hey Steve, there goes the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, it just went downhill last Saturday, man. Okay, let's see, spouse's birthday, Teresa Hayes, September 27th, I think I announced that last week. Or September 23rd. John and Penny Graves, September 23rd, their anniversary, again, happy anniversary, John. And they joined Rotary, Debbie Zitko, one year ago, September 2nd. Casey Wright, September 21st, 10 years. And Robin Bajinski, September 30th, 12 years. So congratulations on your anniversary, joining rodeo, a rodeo. It's sometimes it's like a rodeo, isn't it, Rotary? Okay. Uh, let's see, any happy or sad dollars?
Yeah, we've got a couple of happy dollars. We've, we've got the Browns didn't embarrass us on Sunday. And the Indians are in the playoffs.
Yeah, that makes me happy, both of them.
Makes me happy.
That'll be even more happier tomorrow if the Indians win.
Yeah, me too. We can beat them.
I have a, a happy and a sad dollar. Over this past week, in my family, we've had three deaths. So if you can keep my family in your thoughts and prayers, that would be really appreciated. And happy, our good friend, John Bosco, that's been good news of a doctor last week. So I'm, I'm really happy to hear that and really excited for, for him, so elated.
Yeah, sorry to hear that with Paige about your family, our prayers certainly are with you. And, and yeah, I did hear about John also, great news. He had some tests done and he's, everything looks great. So our prayers worked for John, it looks like. So thank you, everybody. Anybody else?
Yeah, Steve, I know you should be happy that in about a week, your successor has got his second president-elect training session going on.
Nice. Thanks, Latif. I see Latif's there, I don't see his picture, but I see he's here. Thanks, Latif, hope you're enjoying those meetings. Anybody else? Okay. With that being said, I'd like to introduce our featured speaker today. We have Hannah Miller with us, she's from Ohio, she went to Ohio University Medical School as a medical student. She is a cancer survivor and today she would like to talk about childhood cancer awareness month. Please tell us a little about yourself, Hannah, and welcome. Please join me in welcoming Hannah.
Hi, so my name is Hannah and I am not very Zoom savvy, so bear with me. I did make a PowerPoint. Let me try to share my screen. I think. Let's try that, maybe. Did that work correctly?
Yep, everything looks good.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Okay, yeah, so my name is Hannah Miller and I am talking about childhood cancer awareness month today, which is September. So at the very end of the month, I'm bringing awareness to this. So a little bit about me, I was born and raised in here on Ohio by Cedar Point, which is actually how I met Paige. We were really close friends in middle school, so thank you for asking me to speak, Paige, I appreciate you. And I attended Cleveland State University for undergrad and I went to Ohio University for medical school. I'm in my third year of medical school, which is basically, I finally leave the books for a little bit and I actually go into the clinical setting and actually see patients. So instead of seeing everything in books, I actually see it in real people. So I am doing that in Sandusky, Ohio, right now, at Firelands Regional Medical Center. And yeah, I am a aspiring pediatric hematologist oncologist. So I plan on becoming a doctor for kids with cancer. And something that I commonly get asked is, why in the world would I want to do something so sad? Why would I want to, you know, see children, you know, not make it? Why would I want to see children sick all the time? So while this is me in this picture, this is also me. I am an osteosarcoma survivor. So osteosarcoma is basically a bone cancer. It's basically osteoblasts or the cell that kind of go awry in osteosarcoma and those cells basically build your bones up a lot. So in osteosarcoma, what happens is, you know, the normal cell making machinery of the cell kind of goes out of whack and you make a ton of bone cells, so your bones grow, 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 grow. However, these cells aren't working correctly. So they actually, instead of making your bones stronger, they make them weaker. So they, you know, you can have fractures, you can, a lot of, you know, kids with this cancer come in with broken limbs and things like that because it's normally in the, you know, like the pelvis or the femur or bigger bones in the body. But for me, mine was in my fifth toe, my pinky toe. I was actually the first person that they had diagnosed with this at, you know, the Cleveland Clinic and actually one of the first documented cases of this appearance of osteosarcoma. So that was a really rare case. So I'm just going to talk a little about my story a little bit and then I'll get into more about pediatric cancer awareness month. Okay, so it was towards the end of my sophomore year of high school. I, actually, end of my volleyball season of sophomore year of high school, that I realized I was super athletic. I was playing a lot of volleyball and I was like, wow, my foot really hurts and I didn't really know what was going on. So it's in my toe and it seemed like it was growing and I, it was the weirdest thing. And I was like, whatever, we'll monitor it, I'll take some ibuprofen, deal with that way. So I did that for a month or so and then it hit December and I was like, well, this still really hurts, so I should probably go see a doctor. And I went to the doctor and she basically was like, oh, this is a benign bone tumor, you don't have to worry about it. It really shouldn't do anything else, it should get better, just take some ibuprofen and call it a day. I was like, okay, so at that point, I was playing way more volleyball, I was doing traveling season, I was on my feet all day, all the time, just playing a ton of games and my foot kept growing, my pinky toe kept growing, it was red, blue, it was bruised, it kept me up all night, all the time. And just was severely painful. And you know, people always ask me, like, how'd you know? And to put in perspective, my pinky toe was the size of my big toe because it just kept growing. Didn't fit in my shoes anymore, I used to have like teammates like pull off my shoes after playing volleyball just because it got so swollen. And then after that, we were like, we need to go see somebody else because something's not right. So we went to another doctor and the doctor took one look at my foot and he's like, I'm sending you to the Cleveland Clinic. So the doctor that I went to see at the Cleveland Clinic, he actually had like a six month waiting period or so and I got in within a week. And I just remember the look on that surgeon's face when he saw my foot, you know, on the x-ray and he was like, I don't know what's going on, but we need to amputate. So when I was towards the end of April, so five months after all this had started, I went and got an amputation of my pinky toe, so I have nine toes. And I went back to my normal life, I went back to high school, I was fine. It only takes about three weeks to actually fully recover from an amputation like that. So I was back to playing sports, I was just being a kid again. And then on my 16th birthday, we got a call from my physician that did my surgery and he was like, I have some bad news. This is osteosarcoma, a very, very aggressive form of bone cancer that can metastasize the lungs, it can go elsewhere and you need to receive treatment. So I finished out my sophomore year of high school. In the first day of summer, I was receiving a surgery for a Metaport implant, which is a device that basically connects to the bigger veins in the body to better distribute chemo and other medications like that. And I received my first treatment, the first day of summer, between my sophomore and junior year. So I had a very different kind of, you know, 16 year old life than most teenagers. I was in the hospital about five days a week for nine months, I received chemo for about nine months. And, you know, you know, everyone kind of knows the common side effects of chemo. Everyone knows that you get nauseous, you vomit a lot, you lose your hair, things like that. And I had all of that, you know, going from being a super athletic, healthy, you know, stronger teenage girl to being pushed around in a wheelchair by my parents and my grandparents and my 10 year old sister at the time. Was definitely a big change for me. I had, I was no longer able to go to school because I was so immunosuppressed, so I missed three fourths of my junior year of high school. And then, you know, there's something, those are things that you kind of expect with chemo, a little bit at least. But for me, what I didn't expect was the emotional pull that having this diagnosis really put on me. So after I was diagnosed, pretty shortly after, I was pulled from most activities and I watched a lot of my family kind of fade away. Besides like my immediate like parents, sister, grandparents, most of my family kind of, you know, distanced from the scene. You know, no one really knew how to deal with the sick me. I was kind of like a walking zombie and no one really knew how to see that from me when I was so lively. And same with friendships, you know, in high school, you depend on going to school, you depend on going to sport events and I couldn't do any of that anymore. I was in the hospital five out of seven days a week. So I watched a lot of my friendships fade away and, you know, during that time, I, it's very easy to feel lonely. You know, so during this time, my pediatric oncologists and my nurses that were taking care of me became my absolute best friends and, and so thankful that God blessed me with them because I would not be where I am today. The caregiving to me. You know, they really stepped up and became my new best friends and family. And when I was going through this, I realized, you know, what if I became a doctor? What if I, you know, what if I use my situation that I went through to help other people going through this as well? So that was when I decided that I wanted to become a doctor. And I just, you know, I couldn't imagine doing anything else with my life besides helping strong and brave warriors fight, you know, through what I went through because it's something that no one should ever have to experience alone or let alone at all. So yeah, so after about nine months of chemo, I finished in January of 2014. I went back for my senior year of high school. And then as of 2019, I was considered cured of osteosarcoma. So I am cancer free still to this day and I am six years as of now, almost seven coming in January. So I'm super passionate about pediatric oncology, you know, it's my goal to become a cancer doctor for kids. And that's why I love sharing some pediatric cancer statistics, you know, just to show, you know, prior to me being diagnosed, I thought it was such a rare thing. You don't really hear about so many kids getting diagnosed with cancer, but it's really, really, really not that rare. So I like to bring awareness to this, especially during September, but every month, this is super important. So if there's any questions at all, feel free to stop me, I can talk really fast too, so just tell me to slow down if I need to. But yeah, I'll go ahead and get started on this. So every day in the United States, there's 43 children under the age of 20 that are diagnosed with pediatric cancer. And around the world, there are 300,000 cases every day that are diagnosed, or every year that are diagnosed. And that's 800 children per day being told that they have cancer. So that's their life getting flipped upside down, you know? It's 800 children every single day. And in the United States, it's about every one out of 285 children that will be told that they have cancer by the time they are 20. So if you look at like the average size of my high school, for example, it was about the size of 400 students or so. And within my own high school, there were two kids, including me, that had cancer. So you know, it's about that kind of like size of people that you can see cancer within, so it's not uncommon. The overall incidence, you would think as our technology is improving, our treatment methods are improving, that these things, yeah, it's actually increasing pretty drastically. So it's increasing by about 0.7% every year since 1975. Can you guys hear me? My internet said that it's going weird. Am I still okay?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay. Um, yeah, so basically since 1975, cancer has increased about 0.7% every year. So in total, I believe I read that that was about a 27% increase in childhood cancer diagnosis ever since 1975, which is drastic, that's huge, that's a lot of cancer. So the difference between a pediatric cancer and an adult cancer is something that we get asked a lot. And, you know, pediatric cancer is so different because there was really no predisposing factors that you could have avoided. There's no prevention or screening that we can really be traced back to if you smoked, if you drank, if you worked in a factory your whole life and were exposed to certain, you know, chemicals, irritants like that or like if you had radiation exposure, asbestos exposure, you know, things like that. You know, we can trace that back to an adult cancer, but to kids, it's gene mutations, it's just gene mutations. So an example that I can give that's relevant is, you know, for osteosarcoma, for example, there is a gene called retinoblastoma that you can inherit. You know, one messed up gene of this, you can inherit two. If you inherit one, you can develop just retinoblastoma, but if you inherit two, you develop retinoblastoma and potentially osteosarcoma as well. So it kind of, these different genes, it all just depends on your hereditary, if it's in your genes at all, like in your parents' genes and in your relatives. So really, we have no way to prevent or screen for this until it's really kind of there, unfortunately. So with that being said, there are about 12 different types of pediatric cancer, it's not just one disease and there's more than 100 different subtypes of them. So the most common type that we see is leukemia. So leukemia is a blood cancer, so basically it's your blood cells, so your white blood cells that fight infection. You know, you can sometimes have it of like the platelets, which are like clot, they're like the clotting mechanism for like scabs and things like that. And then the next comment is brain and spinal cord tumors, which have higher mortality rates, but it's very common among kids. And then there's also neuroblastoma, which basically is the neural tissue of the body, so it can be in the adrenal glands, it can be other places as well, also very common. Williams tumor, which is of the kidney, very common as well. Lymphoma infects the lymph nodes around your neck or you have lymph nodes all over your body, so it can infect those as well. And you have cancer of that, which is common. And then there is rhabdomyosarcoma, which is a soft tissue kind of cancer, so it's kind of within the muscle. So you commonly see this in younger kids, you can see this, especially in younger girls as well, they have rhabdomyosarcoma, it's very aggressive. And then it's osteosarcoma and ewing sarcoma, which are both bone cancers and kind of, I talked about the mechanism behind that a little bit earlier. But those are also common. And then retinoblastoma, which is cancer of the eyes. So there's many more cancers other than these, but these are some of the most commonly present, presented ones. You know, and the less studied ones, you know, there's also a higher mortality just because there's less presentation of it and things like that. So with all of this going on, childhood cancer is actually the leading cause of death by disease in children under 19 years old. So it's number one cause of death in kids by an illness. So you would think with this, there would be a lot more attention being brought to this and that it wouldn't be viewed as such a rare thing to have pediatric cancer. The average age of diagnosis for a child with cancer is eight years old. So that's 68.3 years of life that are lost every time a child loses their battle to cancer and on average. And if you look at that, that is, at eight years old, they haven't even entered middle school yet, they haven't entered high school, haven't had their first homecoming, haven't had their first prom, they didn't graduate, they couldn't go to undergrad or pursue a career that they love, they couldn't get married. That's these huge milestones in life that everyone looks forward to that are being taken away from these kids by a disease as serious as cancer and it's not uncommon. And globally, it's about 11.5 million years of life that were lost due to pediatric cancer that was calculated in 2017. And that's 11.5 million years of life that is lost. And that to me is absolutely detrimental, that's so extremely sad. So some of the ways that we treat cancer is commonly known. So chemotherapy is basically a, something that you can infuse into the body, it's a medication, it's kind of very, it's extremely toxic. So I put a picture on the PowerPoint to the right and that's actually my chemotherapy that I received. So it's called doxirubisone and that's how pretty it is, it's the pretty red color, just doesn't look very healthy. So you can, you can get those and then infuse those into the Metaport that you receive so it can better distribute throughout the body. And then there's radiation, which is basically like radiation beams that basically target the cancer site in hopes of shrinking it. And then there are some cancers that are fortunate to have immunotherapy for kids, very, very few. But immunotherapy, basically it trains the immune system to turn on the cancer. So cancer actually grows because the immune system does not recognize that there's a cancerous problem going on. There's ways that they can, the cells can kind of hide themselves and manipulate the immune system to think that there's nothing wrong and there really is. So immunotherapy makes them realize that thing that was being hidden and being like, okay, here we go, like this is cancer, let's knock it out. So that's still a very bright, that's a newish kind of treatment, but hopefully there'll be more in the future. So the good news is that 84% of children diagnosed with cancer will be alive five years after they're diagnosed, which is amazing because back in 1970s, it was about 50%, so 50% would be alive. So because of treatment, it has increased and it is great that it has increased. However, the bad news is that of those 84% that survive, 95% of them will have severe chronic health issues for the rest of their life after they finish chemotherapy or radiation therapy or whatever therapy they received. So, and most times, it's actually not from the cancer itself, it's from the treatment they receive because it's so toxic to the body. Because chemo and radiation, well, which is why you lose your hair, that's why you're constantly vomiting and nauseous because it's destroying your gut tube and your GI lining. So it's things like that. And then, so I kind of like to bring up the female survivors, you know, some of these statistics. So female survivors are six times more likely to develop breast cancer than the average population, whether they received chemo or if they had straight radiation to the chest. It's six times more likely to develop in your lifetime. And then most survivors are also at an increased risk of 15 times more of heart failure and seven times increased risk of premature cardiac related deaths because chemotherapy can really, really be toxic to the heart. So that chemo that I have on the PowerPoint, it's called doxirubisone, I think I mentioned, it's a class of called anthracyclines and these are extremely, extremely toxic to the heart muscle. So it can basically like, has a lot of like toxic reactions going on that can produce a lot of damage to the heart and decrease the way it pumps effectively. So for me, during chemo, when I was receiving this chemo treatment, I actually had to go on a certain medication to protect my heart because my injection fraction, which basically is how much my heart is pumping out, it drastically decreased. So there's an increased risk of heart failure among people who've received this kind of chemo and also several other chemos as well. But this is one of the more common ones and it's actually used in several different kinds of cancers for kids and adults as well. So other issues that can occur because of chemotherapy or radiation therapy are things like kidney failure, secondary cancers, which seems so strange that secondary cancers are caused by cancer treatment, but it's because, you know, these hugely toxic things like radiation, chemo, they are also mutating cells as they're destroying the bad ones. So that can lead to secondary cancers. And then there's hearing loss, so for example, I had a chemo that causes hearing loss, so I have to get audiology screenings every five years for the rest of my life. I also had a chemo that caused kidney failure, so I have a nephrology on board and I also have cardiologists on board with my case as well. So it can also cause gastrointestinal problems. They can kind of like really mess up the GI system because there's so many rapidly replicating cells in your GI system that the chemo can target and really just mess up with that. And then in younger children, it can cause a lot of behavioral changes as well, you know, you're kind of, kids don't understand always why, like, why am I getting this medication, why am I going through this? This is not, you know, normal kids aren't doing this. So it can really cause a lot of issues with kids that younger, that are younger and don't understand what's really going on. It can cause pulmonary diseases like pulmonary fibrosis, where basically little lungs kind of just like, it can become fibrotic, I guess, I can't think of another word for it. And that infertility is another issue, especially in females. So more recently, it's kind of becoming more common to discuss with younger females that are in their fertile stages or things like that if they would, you know, want to remove their eggs and save them so that there's a better chance of, you know, pregnancy in the future and things like that. But that's not always the case for a lot of people, I, like, this was not an option for me. So, you know, infertility is always a potential with cancer. Mental health disorders are extremely high amongst population of people. So it's, I read in an article that it was up to 42% of kids that received chemo they, or radiation or some sort of treatment, they have a risk of developing PTSD, anxiety, depressive disorders. And these can be really short lasting or they can be very long lasting as well and last their entire life. So, and it's also very common among siblings and parents to also experience mental health disorders following a cancer treatment in the family of the kid. It's like 50% of siblings actually develop PTSD. So, and then there's also growth in hormonal problems, you know, when you're attacking the body with different toxins, while a child is actively growing and their organs are still developing and their, you know, hormones are still equilibrating. This can cause a lot of issues and it can affect their growth and stunt it almost for the rest of their life unless they need treatment for them. It can cause other things like peripheral neuropathy and just a lot of other things that can go on. There's a huge list of issues that can happen. So you would think, you know, with this being one of the most common causes of death among kids, that's caused by disease or, you know, all the other things that I've listed, that there would be more research being put towards pediatric cancer. You know, there's 68.3 years of life loss for every child that dies of cancer on average. So you would think there'd be a lot more research kind of going in and whatnot. However, only four drugs have been made since 1970, four drugs. For specifically for pediatric cancers that I've already explained why they're so different from adult cancers. And, yeah, literally four drugs. And adult cancers have over 100 drugs that have been made for them since 1970. So some cancers actually remain without a definitive cure and they have more of like a maintenance regimen where basically we just keep it under control and it's not like a cure. So some cancers have like up to like 85% likelihoods of returning and, you know, we just don't have that like method to 100% know how to knock it out and there hasn't been enough research into it to really know how to knock out some of these cancers. So 4% of government funds toward cancer research in total goes towards pediatric cancer. So ninety six percent goes elsewhere, four percent goes towards pediatric cancer, even though it seals the most years of life of way of any cancer. So to put this in perspective, Americans actually spend more money at Starbucks in three days, in three days than what the National Cancer Institute will spend on childhood cancer research every year. In three days, we spend more on Starbucks. So shows how minimal the funding is for this, even though it should be so, so much more. So how can you help? You know, this is, September is Child of Cancer Awareness Month. And one of the main things of Child of Cancer Awareness Month is that people are trying to bring awareness that pediatric cancer isn't that rare and it's actually increasing a lot unfortunately. And kids deserve more than four percent of funding. You know, that's sixty eight point three years of life on average that are lost and eleven point five million years globally lost to cancer for kids. And they deserve more than four percent. We deserve more funding and that kids who do survive cancer, they should not be burdened with lifelong chronic health issues that still may take their life at an earlier time in the average population. We need better treatments. We need better chemotherapy. We need more immunotherapy research. We need better radiation treatments that aren't so detrimental to kids and their growth stages. And so that they can live long, happy lives after they beat cancer because that's what they deserve. So what you can do, you can donate. There's multiple different fundraising sites. So Alex's Lemonade Stand is a very commonly well-known pediatric cancer site that you can have fun. I've actually linked all of these, you know, the donation is right there. I can send this out so that if you guys are interested or you can look it up, whatever's easier. Coalition Against Childic Cancer, St. Baldry's Children's Oncology Group. These are all very common ones that you can donate to. So if you have any questions about that, feel free to let me know. Every dollar makes a difference because kids deserve one in four percent. Okay, and then I was gonna go in. So Paige asked me to go a little bit into what I do to help raise awareness for pediatric cancer and donations and stuff like that. So in twenty sixteen, my sister and I, she's younger than me. She was ten when I was getting treatment when I was sixteen. So she's in her senior year of high school now. We started a chemo care, chemo care package campaign. That basically what we do is we collect and we fundraise and we bring in a lot of different items like coloring books, colored pencils, crayons, movies, hand sanitizer, lotions, hats, puzzles, card games, like gift cards, all these different things. And we basically, what we do is we wrap it and my sister and I put it together and then we go and we deliver it to the hospitals in the Cleveland area. So we've donated to Cleveland Clinic and university hospitals in the last four years. So our overall goal, the reason why we decided we wanted to do this was because there were multiple holidays where we were stuck in the hospital, the family. So for Christmas, for example, we got out like Christmas Eve night. Like we almost did not make it home for Christmas to be full spirit and holly jolly during the holiday season when, you know, all these things are going on and you're receiving chemo treatment. The family can't really be together. You know, all these different things. And also I didn't mention, but chemo, the average cost of chemo or radiation or just cancer treatment in general for a kid on the family is eight hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. Eight hundred and thirty three thousand dollars. So that can be, you know, lost parental wages that occur because they're receiving chemo and they have to go for their kid, you know, or whatever. And, you know, and some parents, they have to switch job roles. You know, like my dad had to get a new job within his factory just to make sure that someone was with me at all times in the hospital. This is not uncommon. Or, you know, some parents, they have to choose the job over being able to see their kids. So, you know, either way, you know, money is a huge aspect of this and many parents are not able to, you know, be able to pay for treatment and provide Christmas like normal. So what we wanted to do was just to help children with cancer and their families smile, you know? Some things that we found that were super helpful during, you know, our treatment was just those little gifts that we got sometimes or, you know, someone reaching out with a gas card or something like that. So we really just wanted to help make kids smile during this time. So unfortunately, COVID nineteen has changed a lot of this for us. Just because normally we were going through my medical school, we were going through our homeschool system and things like that. So we were just like collecting items and during a pandemic, that's really hard to minimize germ transfer. And also these populations of kids are so extremely sensitive and susceptible as they are immunosuppressed to contracting illnesses like this. So we're still kind of working on how we want to approach this. Just since we won't probably be able to have the normal bringing in massive donations. I did forget to mention, but we have donated four hundred and sixty five care packages to this day. And they're fully stuffed every year. We put as much as we possibly can in them and then we deliver them on New Year's. So that is still the plan for this year as of right now until I hear otherwise from university hospitals or Cleveland Clinic. But what we can always use more of are gift cards of any kind. So like food, gas, anything like that. It really goes a long way, especially since most patients are traveling hours to get to their treatment every week because they don't have like a nearby site because pediatric oncology isn't in every hospital. So also like new movies, if they're sealed and packaged, it's awesome. Any package or new toys, games, cards, puzzles, anything like that, we can always use. And then also we always wrap our boxes in decorative gift packages. So you can find these at Walmart for like six to twelve boxes in one package. That price really does add up and we pay for that every year. So those always are great donations as well. And then in November, we will start collecting things and we should have a new Venmo account set up. If you would like to just monetarily donate and we can kind of figure out what we're in need of, that also works as well. If you guys would like to be involved in this, that is absolutely welcomed. We can use all the help we can get. You know, because we are planning in the future on expanding out to other hospitals in the area like Nationwide or that is the plan for the future. And we're planning on doing this for a very, very long time going forward. So if you would like to be involved in this, absolutely welcome and we would love to have it. Yeah, so that's pretty much my presentation. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Otherwise, thank you for having me.
What is your average cost to supply one of the gift packages to someone in the hospital?
So honestly, I don't have an, like a price per se. We normally, every gift package, we, so we go from ages zero to nineteen. So every gift package usually gets a hat, gloves, a scarf, a reading book, a coloring book or two, crayons, colored pencils, markers, a card game. If it's younger, it'd be like a toy, usually a gift card. I feel like I'm missing something. There's usually hand sanitizer, lotions in there. So it's fully stuffed. So I would say the average price is probably around like twenty five dollars or so for an average care package. If that helps.
Hannah, you mentioned earlier that when you were going through your treatments that you had a lot of friends and family kind of fade into the background disappear, really not knowing how to deal with this. I know I've had some similar situation with my family and some friends. And the organization called The Gathering Place, I don't know if you've heard about it, have some great support network for both the folks undergoing cancer treatment. They have like some nurses on staff that can help explain the medical things. But they also have a program for their support system. Spouses can come in and try to learn, you know, how do I help like my wife deal with some of this? And again, they're, they're pretty prominent here in the Cleveland area, east side, west side, south side. There's a pretty good version of that. But I was wondering if you knew something especially for the, for the kids? If there was again, another support caring network to help beef up that, 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 that support that so often disappears or runs away from, from diseases like this?
Yeah, so I'm actually part of a mentoring group like that. That's called Fourth Angel Mentoring. It's not, it's only in the Cleveland Clinic. So that's the only one I've really heard of. I know there are multiple support groups for pediatric cancer patients and their families. They have a lot of like retreats and they have a lot of different clubs like that so that fellow cancer survivors or fighters can get together and kind of like bond and talk and like things like that. But it's not super prevalent either. So there are, there are options, but they're not very, I honestly didn't hear about them until after I finished treatment. So that could be different now. It may be more of like a topic to bring up now, but it wasn't back when I was getting treatment.
Yeah, because certainly there's the physical care and treatment of the individual with cancer. But the support network, the emotional network for both the cancer patient and then again, their surrounding support system, that's an important piece of the moving forward.
Yes, of course.
Hannah, I have a question. This is Debbie. You said that the childhood cancers are basically genetically based. And, but since there's been such an increase since nineteen seventy, there has to be other factors at play. Would you say that it has to be probably toxins in our environment and our food?
Yeah, so this is, you know, the, I guess the thing with pediatric cancer is that it's either genetic mutation or we don't really know what radiation, sometimes those are what trigger those genetic mutations to further like ensue and cause cancer. Or it could be, you know, toxins, it could be things like that. It also, you know, it's, it's hard to picture, you know, like a kid who's like three years old, for example, having so much exposure to toxins that they develop cancer compared to like a sixty five year old who would maybe have seen so many toxins in their life, like come in their system. So there's, this is where the study like in the research is needed more so that we actually can understand how to further, you know, prevent these things and how to, you know, figure out what are all the gene mutations? Because there's only so many cancers that actually have been traced back to genes. But that's what we have so far because we don't know what really causes this. There are a lot of, you know, Down syndrome patients, Kleinfelter's, other, you know, genetic abnormalities. They have way higher risk of developing like leukemia and other kinds of cancers. So we've traced that to that as well, but that's also a genetic thing.
I, I just read that the average baby is born with over two hundred and sixty toxins in their placental blood, so.
Okay, yeah, I have not read that. I'm not sure a hundred percent, that's just where the research is further needed, just to kind of see, you know, what really is causing this. There's just hasn't been enough done sadly.
Thank you.
You, this is Latifah for, you mentioned a number of areas that has certainly policy ramifications or, or, or policy implications as it relates to the funding for research. NIH only funding four percent for pediatric research, the side effects from the cancer. And the, the, the other piece that you might have spoke on, because I, I've been in and out, is the early detection piece. That seems to be underfunded and underappreciated because not everybody that you screen or you set up for early detection would eventually be diagnosed. So sometimes it goes underappreciated. And I'm just kind of wondering what, what have you learned about more effort to make early screening and early detection part of a routine physical examination for, for pediatrics? So that some of these can be dealt with a lot earlier, so that the advanced effects can be avoided.
Yeah, so the hard part of screening is we, because pediatric cancers kind of ensue in so many different ways, it's hard to really, you know, be able to push for like a blood test, for example, for leukemia, which is common. But unless they're not having symptoms of, you know, fevers or night sweats or chills or if they're having bone pain, if we don't have that, then we can't really, you know, justify getting a blood test on like a four year old, for example. So that makes it more difficult. Whereas as you get older, you know, when you're fifty years old, you are recommended to, you know, have a colonoscopy. You're recommended as a female to have a mammography. You're recommended to have pap smears. You're recommended to have all these different things so that we can screen for that and see if you are at risk. Whereas for kids, we don't have a specific screening for really any of the cancers to figure that out. And I really honestly haven't heard for them. You know, we don't really know how to prevent them either, so that's the issue. So it's more, so pediatric cancer, unfortunately, it usually already started before you actually like catch it in the process. So usually someone with leukemia will present with bone pain. Someone with osteosarcoma will have a sore bone or like a fractured leg or something. Someone with lymphoma will have swollen neck lymph nodes. You know, there's a ton of different presentations. So it's more so, there's really not a screening that I have heard of that they're planning on implementing to catch this sooner. It could change with the increase in incidence, but I have not heard anything unfortunately. I hope that answers the question.
It, it, it does. I just, I mean, I'm optimistic at some point that there will be more, more research and, and more funding proactively upstream in terms of the, the policymaking process where there are provisions for earlier detection. Even if we, you know, think that a blood test for screening may not be the standard operating procedure or the standard protocol. But I think we most would agree that it has a place in, in early detection and early screening. And, and though that might not be the trend now, you know, I'm optimistic that those things will change hopefully through, you know, the policymaking process, which I think itself needs more support.
Yes, a hundred percent. And I, you know, I'm hoping with more research and more awareness being brought to light of how much these actually are increasing among kids and how it's really not rare. I'm hoping that there will be further implementation of processes to help us figure out, you know, how can we prevent this before it occurs?
Thank you.
Can anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I guess just one final one. Hannah, as you look forward to graduation, do you have an idea of a, a city or a hospital system that you plan to get, or hope to get involved with?
Yeah, so I will graduate with my, I'll be a doctor in about a year and a half. So I'll be starting the residency process starting next summer-ish. So I'm actually, my goal is I want to come back to Cleveland where I was treated at Cleveland Clinic main campus. My goal is I would, it's like my dream to work with my oncologist who treated me. So that is my goal is to hopefully get a residency and my fellowship in pediatric oncology at the hospital which I was treated, which was Cleveland Clinic. That's my goal.
Great question, Bruce. Well, Hannah, let me tell you, you underestimate yourself. You are a very good speaker. We've, we've enjoyed you. You're very intelligent. We enjoyed everything you've had to say and I, I've, I've certainly learned a lot of what you've told us. And please forward all your, your web links over to Paige and she can forward them to Debbie. We're certainly going to pass it on to all our members. So hopefully they will donate to your cause because I, I think what you and your sister have going here is fantastic. So I would like to talk to the club further on that. So thanks again for joining us. And, you know, I always know when the speaker was, was good when you have a lot of questions at the end. So everybody, please, let's all thank Hannah. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it a lot.
You're very welcome. Now you're more than welcome to jump out if you got some things to do. We're going to go over some club announcements right now, but thanks again, Hannah.
Okay, thank you all so much.
Thanks.
Bye.
Okay, everyone, just a couple of quick announcements. I want to pull something up on my screen real quick here. Debbie forwarded everybody along with the meeting invite, a little announcement regarding the, the Emergency Assistance Center. Right now they are lobbying for votes to be awarded a twenty five thousand dollar grant from State Farm Insurance. And right now they're right where they need to be, but they need to stay there. It's real quick. I just did it yesterday. I went online and you gotta, you gotta register and then, then you're allowed to vote up to ten times. So please consider jumping on this website that, you can see the Earl is right there. But Debbie's, we forwarded it to you on the meeting invite and all the members have it. Please, please try to vote for him so they can be awarded the twenty five thousand dollars, right? I love working with these people. They do so much for us in our, in our community. I'm going to be asking for volunteers next month to help install storefronts on Safety Town. So that's coming up next month. We'll look for a good day and then I'll put out an announcement to see if anyone can help put up. We're going to have like twenty storefronts, so the more the merrier to get that job done. October sixth, we're going to a regular meeting. We have Linda Chris, she's VP of Communications for the Akron Zoo. And we're also going to have a couple electoral candidates that Dave And we're also going to have a couple electoral candidates that Dave Fike is putting together. So October sixth should be a good meeting for us. Please attend. Keep in mind, February sixth is our reverse raffle. Things seem to be loosening up a little bit, so hopefully we can do that. And I had to do that via Zoom. Hopefully by February, we can all get together and have it normally. Just a couple of other things. We have our dictionary project coming up. Joe and I will be looking in that a little bit further first week here in October, decide on how many of these we're going to need. But that's one of the goals that we had set up for us to distribute dictionaries for third graders again this year. So we have that project coming up shortly also. With that being said, I think that's it. Unless anybody else has anything to add. Okay, if everyone could join me in the four-way test. Debbie, if you could throw that up on your screen. Please join me in our four-way test of the things we think. First is the truth. Thanks again, everyone, for joining us and I look forward to seeing everybody next week. Enjoy your nice, cool weekend. And we'll see you next week. Meeting adjourned.